Are y'all good down there? You ready? Okay. MJ, good? You good? Good. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It is good to see you on this Monday afternoon. I think the summertime is here, and that's a good thing. So it's good to see your smiling faces and appreciate everyone coming out for tonight's meeting. I do want to remind you that this is our regular council meeting, and the items that are on our agenda, we have discussed in our workshop, which took place about two weeks ago. If anyone would like to grab an agenda and follow along, they're here on the podium, so feel free to help yourself. And if there's anyone who would like to address the council when we get to that point on the agenda, you'll just need to sign in there, and then we'll call on you at the appropriate time in the agenda. So the first item is for a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant. So I'm gonna turn it over to our city clerk, Jessica White. So Jessica, if you'll open that public hearing.
This public hearing is to receive public comments on the 2016 CDBG. The city decided in 2019 to close out that project, and they de-obligated the funds since they did not move forward with the intended project. And the total expenditures were $11,500, and the unused funds were $365,000. And this is the last step before closing out that project. And if anybody has any comments, we will take them at this time. Seeing none.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jessica. Okay. We are now called to order, and I'd like to call on my friend Pastor Greg Love with the Cross Key Baptist Church to provide our implications. So Pastor Greg? It's good to see you. It's good to see you.
I don't have a call to make, ma'am.
You're fine.
God, let us thank you for the opportunity that we have to gather. Lord Jesus, remember what you say in Scripture, that our government is here for the protection of those who do good and for the punishment of those who do wrong. And God, I pray that as we live in a time of not just uncertainty, but often cynicism, sometimes that cynicism goes to our government, certainly at a national level, sometimes at a state level, sometimes at a local level. And God, I just pray for our elected officials. I know their job is not easy. And God, I pray that you give them wisdom, that, God, you would help them to conduct the affairs of our city with integrity, and, God, that as they serve, that their service would be selfless, sacrificial, and, God, that their goal and desire would truly be that of the betterment of our society. God, I thank you for the leadership they provide. I thank you, Lord, for the cooperation that they seek to engender with businesses, with the county, with other folks. And Father, I just pray for your blessing on them. God, I pray for your watch care over them. I pray, God, that you would providentially provide and protect not just them as individuals, but us collectively. And God, ultimately, I pray that you be glorified in the things that we do here, Lord, even from a secular standpoint, that you would be glorified. And God, I just pray that even in the midst of what's going on here, we be very conscious that you are sovereign over all people and that you are over even, over every human authority system. So I pray that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you so much. For our Pledge of Allegiance, we have some special guests with us this evening. I'd like to recognize Boy Scout Troop 62. So gentlemen, if you'd like to come to the podium, and we will have you offer our pledge, we'll follow your instructions.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, gentlemen. And you all are also working on a special project, from what I understand, with our tree board. Is that right?
That's correct.
You want to tell us about that real quick? Because what you're doing is really helping us within the city. So tell us what you're doing with the tree board.
Do you want to tell us about the tree, about the adoption of the trees?
We're planting some trees in the historical district by Eighth Street Middle School.
Right.
And we have to take care of them for the next few months.
Excellent. So you'll be watering them and just making sure that they're in good shape and that they're thriving and growing, right?
Yes, ma'am.
That is awesome. We really appreciate that. That really helps us out a lot because those trees are so important to our community. They provide shade, they provide aesthetics, so it looks nice as people are driving down the road. So you're taking care of those trees and adopting those trees is very much appreciated. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for being here tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Gentlemen, we have the agenda before us, and Jessica does such a good job to send this out to us in a timely manner. So you have the agenda before you. If there's any changes, we can take that now, or if you'd like to approve that, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Okay. Thank you, MJ. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next item is approval of the minutes, and those were also emailed out to us and in our packet. And you've had a chance to review those, so if there are any changes, we'll take that, or we can approve the minutes of both our meeting and our planning retreat.
So moved.
Okay. Thank you, Wes. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next item on our agenda is public comments. Is there anyone who would like to address the council? Mr. Kater? If you don't mind, if you'll just state your name and your address for our city clerk, and then we're here to hear from you.
First of all, good afternoon, Madam Mayor, commissioners, the pastor, friends, and taxpayers that live here in Tiff County. My name is Emmett Kater. I live at 1-802 Red Fox Trail, Tifton, Georgia, the Tiff West subdivision. The purpose of me coming here today, Madam Mayor, is a couple of things I'd like to discuss, if y'all would allow me the privilege to do it. We were concerned, basically, about the removal of the trees at, I think that's Eighth Street. I'm not familiar that much. I've only been here like 10 years. But I think they call that Witten Mill Road.
Right.
Okay. Anyway, those trees were all chopped down, and they took the trees away. I didn't have a problem with that. But my neighborhood where I live, y'all forgive me, it looks like slum to me. Okay? I'm sorry. I have to say that. It's an eyesore. They didn't clean up all them stubs and things they left there, and so the people are concerned in the neighborhood, and they want me to be the watchdog timer.
Right.
They want me to be the go-forer. Okay? So I came to apologize and pray to the goodness of you people to help us. We need help. And the thing we need is, I've been advised that they cut the trees down. The Garvys, I believe, own that property. They cut the trees down for, to make money, and I'm told they're planning on rebuilding, not rebuilding, but putting pine trees back there. But in the meantime, Madam Mayor, commissioners, and the code enforcement, there's no ordinance that says they can't be levied a fine or penalty if they don't hurry up and clear those eyesore-looking stumps they got laying all over the place. Now, my problem is this: if there's nothing on the levy that can fine them for not cleaning that up, why is there codes that say, quote, "If you got a car in your yard and it's been decrepit," and sitting there, code can levy a fine against you for abandoned cars and trucks and things, but no abandonment on pine trees that's left on the ground? And it looks bad. I'm about to cry because I lived there, and I want my yard looking very well. As you see, my house is pedicured to the bone.
Oh, yeah.
All the houses in the neighborhood are pedicured. And the next thing, sir, is that I was advised that they had planned on building a strip club through there, and they had planned on building apartments. Well, to my knowledge, when we first had this meeting, back there, what, 10, nine years ago, they weren't going to build anything on the property, and it's still up in air. There's about Hour 14, Hour 13 zoning for single-family dwelling, but we have not been called to, for our opinions on building properties and stuff on that property. And we haven't been told about it. And newspapers haven't put anything out about it, and the Fullwood Development, they are concerned. They called us to joint meet to find out, why are they doing this? And it hadn't been brought to their attention either. So, sir, madam, and people, the two communities, the subdivision on the other side, feels much better, high-powered subdivision than Tiff West, but we are both high taxpayers to the city, and we are both concerned. Maybe they are not going to build anything on that property yet. Maybe they are going to build, what you call it, pine trees? And if that be the case, then somebody need to do something, make them get that stuff cleaned up. And we want it cleaned up, and we want, we pray to, I don't know who my commissioner is, I forgot what his name was. Who's my commissioner? You, sir. Yes, sir.
That's me.
Okay. Well, I ain't trying to be funny. I voted for you because you're in my district too, and I love you like a rock. Well, sir, you need to help us. And the one across the street, so if I'm signing board and signing a gavel on my, I sit my butt down. But what I am concerned about, sir and madam, please, y'all do something for us. Make the owners clean that property. Some kind of way you can force them to clean it, or put a fine, a fine, make an amendment, a resolution in there. That probably been like that for like, what, two months or better now, where they cut the trees down, going on three. It don't take that long for somebody to bring a bulldozer in there by Ryland. Whoever they got the money, they've been paid the money for the trees, pay somebody to clean it off and cut down, and make our neighborhood look just as pretty as any other subdivision in Tiff County. And those are the things that I'm concerned about because they never put in the document back there when Mayor Mayor Jamie Kater was the mayor. It was never voted on what they're going to do with that property. I got those documents. I didn't bring them with me. I didn't think I needed them, but it was never voted on building anything on that property. At first, they wanted to build a doctor's office on the, on the east side of Red Fox Trail, right in that area where the agri-rama is, but all the people didn't want that, but they didn't vote on what they're going to do. I don't know if the same owners bought that land or sold it to somebody else, but I think y'all get the gist of what I'm trying to say. I don't want to keep talking over and over again and beating a dead horse, but these are the items that I'm concerned about. Now stand and wait and tell me what y'all want to do, what y'all want me to do.
Well, let me, as your council member, let me make a couple of comments, correct a couple of things, or at least one thing. I do represent Tiff West.
Yes, sir.
I do not represent across the road.
That's county, right?
The west side.
Yes, sir.
That is, that's inside, that's outside the city limit.
Yes, sir.
They pay no city taxes.
They pay county.
They've been asked numerous times to come into the city, and we'll be glad to then listen to their concerns about inside the city limit.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate you in Tiff West.
Okay.
I talked personally to Jonathan Garvey, who owns that.
You did? What, sir? I can barely hear.
I talked personally to Jonathan Garvey about the property.
Yes, sir.
I did not get a date of when he's going to clean it up, but I will get back with him this week to find out what his schedule is. He told me he is not building anything there. He will replant it in pine trees in November. You obviously don't plant new trees with summer coming, though he said it will be November. He will replant them.
Okay.
I will ensure that he does not wait until November to clear those stomps.
Yes, sir.
But he, I didn't get a date, like I said, I did not get a date of when he's going to actually do it. But I take him at his word. I've known him a long, long time.
Yes.
If he tells me he's going to plant pine trees, then that's what he's going to do. So this other noise that's going on, and I know some of where it's coming from, that they did not take the time to pick up the phone and call Jonathan and say, "What are you doing?" And there's a bad thing going on, you know, in today's society. We hear one thing, and we go tell somebody else, and by the time it gets around there, it's all out of whack. So I had heard it, and I said, "I'm going to call Jonathan." And so that's, that's the story. So rest assured, there's not going to be all this going up at this point. So that's why you haven't seen anything in the paper, you haven't seen anything come before the council, because there was nothing to see.
Okay.
And he didn't have to come to us to cut these pine trees down.
Okay.
So it, we're not going to let something happen to Tiff West subdivision.
So he didn't have to have permission to cut the trees down, is what you were saying?
Not, not to my knowledge, he didn't have to have permission.
That's his property, he can do whatever he desires.
I mean, that's why people, you know, they raise pine trees, and that just happens to be inside the city limit.
Yes, sir.
There's not a lot of stands of pine trees inside the city limit, so we don't have that very often. But I agree with you. It does not look good. I ride by there three or four times a week, and so we will get that part taken care of.
Okay. And lastly, if you vaguely remember, Mr. Commissioner, Red Fox Trail dead ends back in that sector. When they talked about this, I, I'm not, no disrespect to you, Madam Mayor, but under, under Jamie Kater, Mayor, and Larry Reiner and the other parties-to-be that was running City of Tifton when I moved here. Anyway, they were talking about cutting, to bring the homes and apartments so they can come through Tiff West and get out. That's why everybody's in Upright. That little narrow street has never had anything done to it. Out of 10 years I've been there, it's in bad shape. And I've been begging and pleading in hope they would, they would revamp our road like they revamped the county road, and I was told the county people that own that land does a better job. They can do it, but we, we, we are taxpayers too. They, they'll patch a little hole on the corner out there and let it go, and the road is really raggedy, and they needed to widen that road and build it up. Mailboxes been knocked down, and they just don't care about Tiff West, sir. We finally, and that's the truth, you can check it out, do your research, it took them nine years since I've been there, 10 years, to replace those lights up there, and people walk at night, and sometime we'll tell the wives and the children, "I bought pepper spray for the ladies," and gave it to them for their security, safety, so they can walk at night, dogs and people coming out trying to bother the women at night because it's still dark in our neighborhood. We need better lights for the people who want to walk, you know? And when it's cooled down, and they, I brought this, several attentions to, really, I don't know if the other city manager, I don't know who the city manager is now. I haven't met him yet, but I brought it, sir, you, I'm not saying it's you because we never talked, but I brought it to the powers-to-be about those incidents and trying to get that street corrected, and I've been beating that same drum about them fire hydrants out there. They don't even come and wash those fire hydrants out like they used to. We get rusty water, water get backed up, and it's nasty in there and dirt in the faucet. And I begged them. I said, "Listen, please come out and turn the fire hydrants on and run all the water out those lines so we, that's drinking water and everything." They haven't been out there in a year to clean out the lines, and that's all I want to say, sir. Maybe I can get them to, these are, these are, yes, sir.
You and I can have a.
Yes, sir. So I don't want to tie up all the commission meeting. If I'm out of line, just tell me I'm out of line. It's just things need to be brought to your attention as a taxpayer and a citizen, what's going on in our community and city.
You have my number.
Yes, sir.
You have my number. You bring my, and if you notice, the speed limit several years ago got reduced to 25 because people were going too fast.
Yes, sir.
You know why it got reduced? One of your residents called me.
Yes, sir.
Said, "People, it's 35. People are going too fast."
Yes, sir.
We changed it to 25.
Okay.
I've had other residents, Mr. Cartwright out there, and I've been out there to meet with him. He lives on the backside there. He had concerns behind the property. It happens to be inside the, outside the city limit, so I couldn't do a whole lot. But you call me.
Yes, sir.
We'll call 101 with those issues.
Okay.
And I'll get with the city manager, and we'll take care of it.
And lastly, get the police department to service our community a little bit more. Let them just drive through there. If they ain't got nothing to do with it, just zoom through there. We see a police officer about every eight months, six months in our community.
Make a list. Let's get together, and we'll go, and I'll go through the list, and we'll just check them off one at a time.
And I thank you so much for listening to me. I appreciate this.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention, because we're all in this together.
Yes, sir.
And it takes our citizens engaging with us and us responding, and so we really appreciate you coming this evening and sharing the concerns of Tiff West and your neighbors. We want to be very responsive. I know that all, we all represent different districts, and Jack is your council representative, and I know he will, he will be very attentive, and I think you'll be very pleased with the results that Jack gets for you.
And thank you, Mr. City Manager. No disrespect to you, sir. You new. You just got here, so I ain't trying to bite by the property, but I wish you a lot of luck with your headaches you got. Trust me.
I'm looking forward to, to come to you, and we'll, we'll get after it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. You give me your card if you got one, sir, so I can call you when you get a chance. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kater.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Following our agenda, our next item is a presentation on Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, so I'm going to come down to the floor and ask our representatives who want to join me. It's good to see y'all this evening. Thank you so much for being here. You always do such a good job with the work that you do. I wish that one day I could stand here and say, "Well, you've taken care of everything," and we have, that's our dream and our goal one day.
I'd love to see that.
Wouldn't that be wonderful? But in the meantime, we have excellent people like you who serve and volunteer your time and fundraise and bring awareness for something that's very disturbing that happens with children and youth, and we thank you for that. You are their advocate, and we are very appreciative. So I want, I forgot my glasses. Hang on one second. Hold on. All right. This proclamation recognizes April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, and our proclamation says, "Whereas the City of Tifton prides itself on giving back to the community and contributing to the quality of life among our citizens, and whereas, as a part of the National Observance of Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, the Tiff County Commission on Children and Youth has organized a public awareness campaign with activities and services necessary to focus on awareness and prevention to eliminate child abuse. And in 2020, sadly, more than 323 children suffered from some form of, some form of child abuse or neglect in Tiff County, and citizens are encouraged to join together to raise awareness throughout the month of April for those children who have fallen victim to abuse and neglect, giving those abused and neglected children a chance for a safe and positive future through this national effort. And whereas, a pinwheel ceremony will be held on April 1st, 2021, to bring awareness to child abuse within our community and to encourage initiatives which support healthy and thriving families. Now therefore, I, Julie Smith, Mayor of the City of Tifton, on behalf of this entire city council, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month for the City of Tifton, and I do urge all citizens to join in this national effort to raise awareness and to help prevent child abuse and neglect, given under my hand and seal on this day, and I'm going to sign this, and it is official at that point. And Lily, you all do such an incredible job. If you want to share with our folks who are with us this evening and maybe watching on our YouTube channel, and we have our Tifton Gazette here, what's going to be happening with the pinwheel ceremony, so that everyone will be aware and know what's, what's going on, if you want to share that information.
Okay. I will let Mr. Philiberto Hernandez, who is the president of the Child Abuse Council, do the pinwheel, and then I'll very quickly tell you about Wear Blue Day.
Excellent. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Philiberto?
Thank you. This is an event that we do every year, and we put the pinwheels, which represent, each of the pinwheels represent a child that has been abused in Tiff County. And luckily, the numbers have gone down this year, but we're also afraid that due to the pandemic and the distancing and everything, it may be that the numbers are not all there. So we encourage everybody to participate, to be aware of this, the need that the children have, and to support us, you know, like you're doing at this time. And we want to thank you for doing that, and God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lily?
Okay. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Another thing that goes on during April that the Tiff County Commission on Children and Youth sponsors is Wear Blue Day, and this year it's going to coincide with the pinwheel date, which is April, Thursday, April the 1st, and we encourage everyone to wear blue that day. I have a, I reluctantly am not going to tell you the hashtag. I will send it to you, and I will make it public on Facebook, but if you can take pictures that day and post it to Facebook using that hashtag, so we will all see it. And that's to show our support of the kids in Tiff County. It's an easy thing to do. You can social distance, you can do it at work, you can do it at home, you can do it anywhere you are, and just do that simple gesture of wearing blue and making people see that you're part of the effort. And lastly, I would like to very quickly say that April is when we, the Child Abuse Council does a dual thing, which is the Blue Ribbon Campaign, and that is for their main fundraiser of the year. They sell the ribbons for $20 each. We haven't went up on that price in the 25 years that I've been there, 30. And the other, and they also use it as an awareness event, so that all over the county where you go, and last year they were scarce because of the pandemic hit right where we needed to, and that was not something that we could go about like we usually do. But if you've been in Tiff County over the years, you probably, and they're still there, there's lots still out, where you see the blue ribbons, and that's to show our support. And so often, that's the only opportunity we get is, as a community, to show that we have the unity to work toward efforts. And this is April, Child Abuse Awareness, so the blue ribbon is an excellent way for a community to come together and show that support. And thank you very much for all y'all do as well.
Thank you. And what time is the pinwheel ceremony on the 1st again? What time?
The pinwheel ceremony is at 10 o'clock, and it will be held at the Tiff County Rec Department Special Programs Building, which is at the corner of Second Street, and on one side it's Baldwin, and on the other side, South Ridge, but it's there at that Special Programs Building. We've held it there for quite a few years because of the visibility. During the ceremony, we will practice social distancing. So it's outside, and the speaker this year will be Sheriff Jean Scarborough. And of course.
Wonderful. Again, not only do we, the council, support and applaud the work that you do, this entire organization and community do, so know that you have our support, you have our greatest appreciation. The work that you do is not easy, but it's very necessary. So thank you for that, and thank you to the entire board for your hard work and your diligence in trying to eradicate child abuse in our area. Thank you.
And thank you all for what you do as well.
Thank you. All right. All right. Our next item is an update on garbage service from our friends at Ryland Environmental. So gentlemen, I'll turn that podium over to you.
Thank you. Just wanted to give an update on where we're at regarding residential service first. I know any, any transition into a new hauler is difficult. The residents in Tifton have worked with us quite a bit. It's, it's been as smooth as, as possible. We do have all, all residential cans are delivered. We were asked to come up with a tagging system. We have tagged quite a few carts. I know the automated sideload style of pickup is different, so that was a little bit of a challenge to overcome. A lot of people had their cans together, can't, obviously can't get to them with the automated sideload style vehicles, so we did come up with a tagging system. That has helped tremendously. We also have a little bit of a different system in picking up bulk, so we run through So we run through our routes and then pick up bulk on Fridays, based on list that's turned in by all of our drivers after we've gone through the entire community, so we can service it in a more efficient manner. Our last hurdle now is to complete commercial container delivery. We are almost done. We probably have around 50 containers left to deliver. We're working now personally, I'm working personally with the previous hauler. We're in communication so that there are no businesses that are left out, left without a container or without communication as to what's going on. Even three months in, there's still some people that were not aware of all the changes that have been going on or were part of a national account that are brokered, you know, McDonald's or, you know, they don't pay their bills locally. So it did create a lot of confusion. But we are almost done and transition's almost complete.
Okay. Does anyone have questions? Surprise.
Surprise, surprise. What is the process with bulk items?
So bulk items with us running the automated sideload, obviously, they can't pick those up. So the drivers are making a list throughout their route days and turning them in. And then when we have the rear loads available when there are no city routes on Friday, that's when we complete our bulk service.
Okay, so the day my neighborhood picks up is on Monday?
That's correct.
If I don't put one out till Wednesday, you're not going to see it.
Well, we're running through the area because there's always bulk in every area. It's not a perfect, it's not a perfect situation, but that's the way that we've, the most efficient way that we've come up to pick up bulk.
Can we call you and let you know?
Absolutely. We get that quite a bit.
So if I don't call, but I put it out on Wednesday, it kind of flips the coin whether you're really going to see it or not? Because you might not come by.
I've gotten very few calls that we haven't gotten, that we haven't completed bulk service from your area.
Okay. Yard debris, same kind of thing? Are the garbage guys letting you know that yard debris is there?
Yard debris is run on the service day. We did receive delivery of our second grapple truck. So we were running two grapple trucks, and that is on the day of service.
So you're 100% caught up on yard debris?
We are caught up on yard debris. We ran your whole, we ran your whole area. If there's any left that might have been out after they went through, but we are doing, we're doing good on yard debris.
I'll check the one tomorrow and I'll be note.
All right. What's the number if someone has bulk they need picked up? Or if there is, if someone accidentally, you know, their yard debris is there, what's the number? So we can.
Our office number is 229-382-4411.
4411, okay. And they just call and say, look, I'm at 123 Main Street. I've got some yard debris in my front yard, and I need you to pick that up.
We have Megan here locally. If it doesn't, if she doesn't pick up, it automatically goes to our Dublin office, so that we can catch all the calls.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Mayor, Council, let me just start. This is Scott Floyd for all of you.
This will go on the channel.
Scott is the general manager for Tifton and has quite a big task doing this each and every day. So we're 60-plus days into it, so we appreciate all the work and what you're doing. Are you working out of an office? Are you here locally?
Yes.
Describe that to us.
Yes, so we currently are housed at 816 Love Avenue. So we are here locally, working out of that location.
How many employees do you have here?
We have 13 employees. We're all local, all local to the Tifton area.
And I guess I could assume that you're buying things here in Tifton for what the company needs for servicing our communities?
Yes, we are. We have a local vendor that we're working with that's servicing all of our vehicles. We're buying our parts locally, so. Yep, we have fuel delivered here from a local vendor.
All right, good. Well, we're excited to hear all the progress. Again, just make sure the bulk items, some of the common themes that we ran into, and we're still running into, just the bulk items, making sure that we educate folks here. If they know what to do, they're pretty good about that. So what we don't want is junk staying out on the curb for a week if we could help it. So make sure, please, help us educate. We're looking for some education still on recycling.
Yes.
If there are pockets that residents are real serious about recycling. Then we're ready to move into the commercial recycling once you're established and stable. So we'll look forward to that.
Yes. I did speak to Rotary last Wednesday, so they reached out for some local community development on recycling. So I'll reach back out to them again.
And I think it's lastly, just hearing Mr. Kader talk, because we had some, again, we learn by our lessons. And please communicate with the drivers. If anything happens with those trucks on the route, that's communicated to you especially. You in turn bring it to Ricky Hobby. And then we, if there's anything that we need to let the residents know, then we certainly can help with that. If you run over mailbox or you have ruts in the yard, we've had issues at Tiff West, which we fixed, but we want to make sure we stay on top of that and we do that together, okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
One question.
Yes.
From your home office, I know you guys keep your extra cans and dumpsters in the back of Love in that open yard. Is that the plan to keep that stuff there?
No, we will be relocating the trucks and containers to another facility. We're going to stay, the phones will still be there, clocking and out. The guys are coming in and out of the Love Avenue. But our trucks and containers will be moved in the next couple of weeks, so there won't be anything behind there.
Already getting the calls.
The dumpsters are gone. Those are all, those are all out. So there are, there's about 30 residential containers back there now.
Let me ask you. I got one more thing. And really, it's an education we need to do. We had the same trouble prior to you. For all those that are listening, please don't put loose items in the trash can. Because as you know, with these, you load it and the wind's blowing, or you've just got paper or whatever in there, it blows out. So it should always be in a bag. The other thing, are y'all, I notice as I ride around, a lot of people don't understand the concept of break down boxes for recycling. And I see these cans, they're just not broken down. Is that something that potentially you would put a tag on those cans and say, please, break this down? And that's not new. It was always supposed to be broken down.
Yep, that is not new, and it's something that's being addressed with the tag system.
Question, question?
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, the garbage, the collection of garbage is still a city service. They're just our contractor handling that for us. You know, I know that you guys are out there and you're doing everything in your power, but is there something that we could do maybe on the city website under our solid waste line item or something? That if someone has a bulk item request and they can't get ahold of Ryland or whatever, they could maybe get online, type a little, you know, put in their address, maybe put in what they need or whatever, and then that process would be connected to an email to Ryland that sends them. So they can maybe on a database check that or print those emails out to create work orders or something? I'm just trying to think of an extra way for our citizens to be able to get, you know, they leave a message sometimes and you guys, you know, you have folks out. I mean, this is just, businesses have folks that are out sick or they may be out on vacation. And, you know, this would give us another opportunity for the residents to maybe put in their need and it still get to them in time. I'm just thinking outside the box.
Well, optimally, we would want to make sure, I mean, this is on a schedule, so it's almost foolproof. But if there's education.
We do that one like that? Okay.
I receive container requests nightly from Natalie, so if there are any requests, I do receive requests from the city already.
For bulk waste items, and they say, well, I can't remember the number of the round, but I can remember tifton.net, and I can go on there and go, hey, listen, 913 44th Street. My name's Wes Ehlers. I have serviced and I need, you know, I got a couch that needs to be picked up or whatever. You know, it sends an automatic email to you guys, and then you print that out and go, hey, we got to pick up Wes's stuff over there. Put it out on Wednesday, or mine's on Thursday, so it makes sense. Feel like in Jackson area. Hey, I put it out on Wednesday. You guys already ran it on Monday. You know, I'm just trying to think of it.
I'm trying to.
Efficiently, I guess.
Yeah, I talked with Jonathan to see if that's possible.
That's a lot of time on the website. Somebody put something in, and whoever responded, say, hey, you need to call the Ryland office at 202 and 323.
Okay, Scott, thanks for coming.
All right, gentlemen, we are at the point of our agenda now for the consent agenda. And there are four items on the consent agenda. And as you know, we can take all of these together or we can individually. So I'll leave that up to you to make the motion on how you'd like to handle this work.
I move we approve them all together.
All right, so we have a motion to approve all those items. And again, just to remind everyone that we have discussed these at our workshop. So we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Wes. So we have a motion second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is item number seven. It's an ordinance resoning 1.84 acres, located at 504 and 508 Timmons Drive. And that was submitted by Robert John Guthrie, and we heard about that at our workshop as well. Does anyone, would anyone want to make a motion concerning that? Or if you have any questions, we have our representatives from Community Development here to answer any questions if you have any.
I have just one question. I know it was, Mr. Guthrie said he was going to, there was going to be a buffer kind of thing. It was going to be done, because I looked at that property, went over and looked, and there's an area right behind it. There's a fenced area. And the concern, I think, was that this fenced area would start encroaching. And supposedly, sometimes between these two houses, they drive vehicles through there. Well, that's just not acceptable to drive vehicles through there. So if there's this buffer going to be done, that, you know, could stop, could stop some of that. And I just wonder what are the plans, you know, what are you planning to do with it and to make that differential between a residential and a business?
Okay, did we, Crystal, is that something you could answer? Or Mr. Guthrie's here, so I'll put it, Crystal to.
So in our department, what would be required between the residents and the commercial business?
So you'll ensure, you'll ensure that that happens, okay? Pete, the other thing, when I was looking, and I'm sure you've been there, and there's this ditch that runs through there. You can't see it for all the bramble. I mean, it's just, you know, and so I don't know if that's city, city property. If you just take a look and see what's, because it does look, it can look 100% better when that house is gone. There's no question about that. But that area right behind there, just look there. It provides a, there's a buffer there from those houses, but it just does not look good.
Right.
When you ride down 82 and you look over there, it's just.
So Pete will check on that?
I think, I will check. I think that's on this property, but I'll check.
The water that I saw there looked stagnant as well, and we know what problems that caused.
Okay. Any other questions of Crystal, or Community Development? All right, I'll look for a motion concerning this rezoning.
I'll make a move.
Okay, to approve?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item number eight is an ordinance rezoning 0.51 acres located at 418 Seventh Street West, also submitted by Robert John Guthrie, and we heard about that at our workshop. Is there a motion concerning that rezoning of that half acre lot?
Before you ask, let me ask you, just to clarify one more thing, because I was looking at that fenced area. And Crystal, are you familiar with that? Have you actually been to that property?
I have.
Okay. You know, and behind that house, there is a fenced area that, is that, not knowing where the lot lines are, but is that fenced area as far back as any kind of, I mean, can the fence go any further back into that property?
Probably, I mean, I've heard you on this one.
You've got the car behind the house that you want to move. There's that fenced, enclosed fenced area.
That's hoping there's some cars there. That's off the property line. The property line goes on back. Yes, sir.
And so is, and that's the thing, is the fence as far back as what any kind of structure is going to go? Are you going to go any further back toward those houses?
It will go further back. That's just the buffer would go back on the property line, which is on back from that fence. That's where the buffer.
So you have the buffer, but that, you're not paying the fence further?
No, that fence has to be.
You're not going any further with fencing?
No, no, no. That fence will not go further back. That's going to stay there. It will be moved over. But not going further back. But the buffer, the plants or whatever we have to do, will go on the property.
That'll be, okay.
That answered your question. Okay, okay. All right, so we have the ordinance rezoning that half acre lot, and I'll need a motion concerning approval or denial of that rezoning. Did I already talk about?
You're waiting to get down, and I'll make the motion.
Okay, you looked at me like I had said something.
No, no, no. I was waiting to say, I was looking to see who was on my own.
You made me second guess what I was.
Was somebody else going to make a motion?
Oh, no, okay. All right, so we have a motion to approve the rezoning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, MJ. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, we are under Other Business on the agenda now. And the first item under Other Business is we have our Board Report. And you can see in the information that has been sent out to us, we have three boards with vacancies. I would like to ask the council to consider holding any appointments to the Tifton Housing Authority at this time. The Housing Authority is a unique board in that it's really the appointment, the mayor solely appoints the Housing Authority. But I've always in the past asked the council to help with that, because I think it should be a council decision. But I would like for you to consider holding off on that. We've got some items that we're working on with Housing Authority. So if we could set that right aside, and you can see in your packet, we have an applicant for Historic Preservation Commission. That's Justin Golden. He has been, he has met with Historic Preservation Commission, and they are recommending his appointment. And then also on the Tifton Tree Board, we have three vacancies. There are two members who have asked for reappointment, and the Tree Board has asked that both of those members, both Lori Felton and Al Potts, be reappointed to the Tree Board. So if you want to take those boards individually or however you want to do, then I'll take a motion to that effect.
Motion to approve Mr. Golden to the Historic Preservation Commission. And I get another motion to approve the Tifton Tree Board with the two vacancies of Lori Felton and Al Potts.
Okay, so we're reappointing them. Okay, so we have a motion on Justin for HBC and then Lori and Al for the Tree Board. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Wes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, Financial Report. Ms. Dana.
I did the layout different. I know y'all probably noticed this landscape. To me, it's easier to read. Okay, for the General Fund, for as of the end of February, we have actually collected 79% of our revenues, which were ahead, because we should be around 66.5%. And then we have this month, the business license will be due.
So that's why.
I think we underestimated on that insurance premium a little bit. That probably.
Yeah.
Which is a conservative guess, and we get, you know, it's always good to.
Say we.
Underestimating.
Underestimating, yes.
Be pleasantly surprised.
Yes.
Yeah, as well as the first, you know, first four are all over. What, you said licenses and permits, you know, we're at 43%. You're saying they're going to, that's going to go up?
Yes, because the license will be due today. First, we're doing the first, so. And remember, this is through just the end of February.
Right, that's 66% versus the, we're at 43, so we're all, you know.
Right.
What's the intergovernmental going to catch up?
Yeah, they should be, next month, they should be, your report should be have this month's data updated.
Okay.
I guess the big things that I like to look at is the lost sales tax. You know, that's that 84% collection. That's good. Franchise, that 87%. I know we have some conversations about, I guess, Georgia Power or whatnot. Taxes, you know, that's that 94%. So Brother Chad has got some work to do. He's got six more percent to collect.
Yeah, I would love to see it at 100%.
Well, I know it doesn't ever get to 100% until maybe a year or two afterwards.
Yeah.
But no, 98, you know, that'd be a good number to get. I would like 97, 98. So if we can catch another 3% there, that'd be good. But that loss, that's, you know, being that we're basically two-thirds through the year, we're at 84%. That's, I mean, these folks are spending money locally, so that's good.
Yeah.
We want to remind them to continue to spend locally at every option that they can. Make that a priority and support our local businesses, so that's good.
So true. The spinster side of General Fund is we're at 63% as of the end of February. We're close to where we should be, but we're still under some, which is good. And it's still below the 39% of the revenues we collected, you know, up through February.
Do we still, Chief Bennett, you might be able to help me answer this. Do we still, I guess, use that factoring company or whatever to help us with the insurance? You know, it's like.
The ISO.
No, it's not ISO, but you know, when we go out for.
Accidents.
An accident or whatever, accident recovery, I think, is what we were.
Yeah, that's.
They've been collecting pretty good. I don't have a total, but, you know, we'll give you a snapshot when we do the budget.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure do.
The other thing, it's not huge dollars, but urban redevelopment is almost at 100% of their budget. We're only two-thirds of the way through. Is that going to?
That's due to removing all of them, you know, the mobile homes that were out there and relocating the residents.
Yeah, we had unexpected costs with the Capes Point ordeal. And I'm watching that very, very closely. We're doing a lot of work ourselves now to finish this up. But it's, that was a tough one for this year and on the cost that we just didn't see. But I'm going to have to sharpen it up for next year. I don't know how to set that yet.
That was, that's an unusual kind of.
It is, and remember, we got a significant investment, private dollar investment coming in, you know, with IDP and some other projects that are going to be going on in the urban redevelopment area. So, so yeah, it, there were challenges that were met, but the return on what's happened in the last year is huge. Who would have ever thought? You know, we'd be talking about $13 million in private investments. So, so we, you know, we do need to keep an eye on that, but at the same time, it's going to. it's, 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 it's gonna, it's gonna work, so it'll be, it'll be a significant improvement.
And several of those mobile homes also had to be torn down and demolished, they could not be moved, so that was another factor.
Non-recurring experience.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, it's something that.
That's right.
I mean, you, you had, you had.
Once it's done, it's done.
And Bruce can, uh, he's done a very good job, I mean, he's here, he needs to deal with more, any more detail.
No, I just, when I see, you know, ninety-four percent of the budget, we're sixty, we're sixty-seven percent done, it's just, you know, it's, you know, are we pretty much done?
And hopefully, if we, if we get that grant for the stick-built houses, the individual, you know, that will be owner occupied, I mean, it's just gonna continue to, to roll forward, so, so keep your fingers crossed on that. Dana, is there anything in this that you see that, as our finance director, that causes you any concern, or is everything, in your opinion, on track for where we need to be?
Yes, everything is, um, accurate, everything's up to date, um, the only thing I really kind of worry about is the Hotel Motel Fund.
Right.
Because that revenue has significantly dropped, so that's something I'm really keeping a close eye on too.
Right.
Um, because they were asking me today, did I, do I have my projections for next year? I said, not yet, but I'm working on that this week, so.
Pete, with the passing of that recent stimulus package or whatever, the cities anticipate to get X amount of funds.
We, we will, actually Dana and I are, I was gonna do that on my report, but we're signed up for American Relief, um, webinar, um, and that's forthcoming, uh, but it's, we have a listing of all the cities, of what we're supposed to receive, municipalities, and, uh, it's, you know, very promising, I, I didn't realize how much we were going to receive, but it's, um.
So this was from last week, stimulus that passed, it's for cities and?
Yes.
I'm not sure if it was from the state or the.
It is, it's in the same bill, House bill.
The one that was good, okay. Just wanted, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
It's been signed.
Okay, moving right along.
The cities and states were getting money.
It happened the first time.
He's looking at you.
I know, it was the previous event.
But the answer your question, yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Alright, any questions of Dana? Thank you, Dana, we really appreciate your hard work, I know that this is, um, it, there's a lot of moving targets in this, in this, and, and surviving this pandemic, and, and hats off to all of our management team for, uh, for getting through this year that's been so difficult, we didn't have to furlough anybody, we were able to keep everything intact, and so, uh, we're just very, very thankful for that, so appreciate your hard work.
Yeah, I think all the departments have done wonderful, um, this year, so.
Yeah, thank you, Dana, we're, uh, we're about to go, um, live with our, our budget, so the departments, all capital is due, uh, and, um, I think all the departments have submitted their budgets, so we'll start cranking that up here real, real soon.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Alright, city manager report, Pete?
Okay, fair, uh, just a few things, um, I wanted to update you on, on the CDBG for the U Center, uh, that I've been meeting with the architect, um, the URA, Bruce and their committee have suggested good things, we went, we have been back and forth with this building, so, uh, they are meeting, um, tomorrow evening, um, for the final, hopefully the final round, uh, and that, at that time, if everyone is satisfied, then I'll give the architect a green light to go into final design, uh, and final budget, so I'll be bringing forward, um, you know, those recommendations on where we are, uh, when we have that locked down, but there was a lot of good discussion, a lot of input, um, and, uh, so, um, I'm seeing great things, uh, as, as it starts to unfold, so that is very close, and then the housing ordeal, I did speak to, uh, the group, uh, a few times, they too are ready to come forward and talk about the final, uh, the, the schematics, the plans, and where we are, so that in tune will go back to the committee, uh, to, you know, talk about that, making sure that everyone is aware, um, especially folks from, from the community, and that's most important, so we're very close to bringing these two to a groundbreaking date, so very close.
It's exciting, that's really exciting, that's good.
And I'm hoping everyone by now is, has seen the striping in town, um, Jeff has worked closely with the strippers, we did get some grant money for that, we did add some additional monies, but, um, the high visibility roads, we added striping, the white lines, the yellow lines, and some stop bars, which really look good, so, um, that's a, that was a good, some good maintenance for, for this particular year, and then, lastly, if, if you have not noticed, the construction on North Forty-One is finally in motion, where the new hotel and the new commercial, um, strips will, will be, so, uh, that, that was really good to see, that there's dirt moving, so they'll be ready to fast track that, and, that is, um, that's all I have, I have the, the rules of procedure and decorum that we talked about, um, I'm gonna probably put that on the work session to see how you'd like to go about doing that, so I'll have that on April, uh, and you could decide on how you'd like to proceed. That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
What about paving, where are we, when's the twenty-twenty-one strict paving starting? Specifically the carpet of road out there at Cambridge Court?
See, that, that list, we should be bringing that forward soon, Jeff.
Well, the list y'all have already approved, done a work with the engineer, I haven't got the bid document, it's been ready, hopefully within the next two months, you can, you do, you do.
Twenty-twenty-one.
Twenty-twenty-one.
We're looking, we're looking at some.
We, we, we did a little different, and I think it's, uh, for consistency's sake, uh, we, we, um, what is the engineer's? Watkins, excuse me, uh, Stacy Watkins, uh, we have asked him to manage the Elmake portion for us, find the engineering side, which is great, but he also does the county, so one of the reasons we want to do that, and Stacy understands very, very well, is that we could probably time the paving, uh, at the same time, so we could be a little more consistent with dates, um, so if we have one paver, uh, hopefully we could do the same contractor and get him in here at the same time, it's much more, more efficient, so.
Well, you know, the, the carpet of road one is, it's city and county together, so I'm, they're gonna pay.
Yes, uh, I'm following, and their, their plans to the county, please.
So we'll get the whole thing done.
Okay, so we're not too far off?
Alright, is that it, Pete?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
That's all?
That's it?
Just all those things?
That's it.
Good job, thank you. Alright, uh, we'll, we'll end with mayor and council comments, and then we will need to go into executive session for legal purposes, does anyone want to volunteer to go first? Uh, mayor and council comments? I'm gonna speak at once? Oh, yes, sir, Mr. Carter.
May I, may I, Mr. Speaker?
Yes.
I wanted to bring one more thing for safety.
Uh-huh.
I'm very much concerned about safety in the city of Tipton, because I live here.
You have a hindered spirit right here.
Yes, sir, and, um, I don't know, how many of you ever go to the affinity clinic? Is that, is that the name of it, where you go over there to Dr. Banks and all of the two buildings? Okay, if you come going north from Waffle House and you make that right turn into there, that's a four-foot ditch, and for two and a half years, I've been calling Department of Transportation, and they, they doing a dog and pony show, they says not their response, I says the right of way, sir, they need to put a guard rail there, and I'm gonna tell you why, I'm afraid some elderly person is gonna lose, that's a very narrow street, and if somebody's coming out and you're trying to get in, you may miss your footage and you fall over in that ditch.
Right.
And you're gonna be injured and total out your car.
Well, I see, I see our city manager right next to us, I know he's so careful.
So, I don't know, how many of you ever noticed that? If you think I'm kidding, just drive through there and look at that deep ditch, and when you get your car, it's gonna scare you.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's, it's not a beautiful thing.
Right.
And the last thing is on Interstate Seventy-Five there, when you come off, going out of Publix, when you come up Seventy-Five, they got a huge guard rail there, but when you're going down Seventy-Five, there's no guard rail.
Right.
And my neighbor almost got killed about five years ago, because a car shot right out in front of her, and his car went down almost into the ditch, so I've been trying to tell Department of Transportation and the state, they need to put guard rails across Second Sixty-Three and that two intersections on both sides, and they don't wanna do it. They said, that's a city responsibility. I'm not finger pointing at whose it is, I don't know if it's the city responsibility to fix that, that right of way, because even on our church, where they got the airport, you know, with the fire station on Elderway Road?
Right.
Right where the, um, um, they parked the, um, hazmat, uh, what you call it, the little helicopter? Well, right there at our church, there's a five-foot ditch there, and I told them, well, that's on the right of way, sir, it's not on the church property, they need to put a guard rail there, one of our tenants fell in that ditch one time, we got him out, but in the meantime, I'm trying to get some funds to get it done if they don't wanna do it.
Right.
But these are two important things I've been looking at with the interstate exits and the, the, um, the, uh, affinity, I'm more concerned about that hospital than anything else.
Right.
I'd hate to see somebody fall in there, and I don't wanna waste any more time, I wanna bring those safety points up.
Right.
That needs to be addressed by, by the Department of Transportation.
Sure, well, he's made notes, so, so we'll reach out to DOT, and we will absolutely, he'll, he'll check on that first thing tomorrow for you.
But I even took.
And then he can report to Jack, so when you and Jack get together, we'll have some answers.
I go through a lot of streets in Tipton, when I see that, I take pictures, and I call Department of Transportation, and they say, ah, there ain't no problem.
Well, Dana, you've gotta contact and Jack.
Yes, sir, that's what I want to bring to y'all's attention again.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much. Alright, you wanna go first on the comments? Nobody volunteered to go first, so I'm looking at you.
I actually don't, I don't have anything to say, though.
Alright, Wes?
I'm good.
You good, Johnny? You good?
We're good.
You good, alright, well, I was gonna recognize our, our county commission chair, Mr. McBrayer, and thank him for being here, but he had to sneak out, so it's always nice to bring you back. Always nice to have our, any of our, oh, there he is, thank you for being here, I just wanted to recognize you and say thank you, and we really appreciate the work that you're doing, and being here and being part of our meetings, and, and just say thank you, and you're always welcome.
Thank you, I don't always sit close by the door, is that?
There you go.